By Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Chris Smith. Please stand.
Father pray. Holy Father, we thank you for this state that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for rescuing last night. We pray of Father God for William Collins' family. We ask you, Lord God, to give them peace and comfort. We pray, Father God, for Governor Edwin Edwards' family. I ask that you give them peace and comfort. Father, we pray for Roar Proctor. We ask you, Lord God, to heal his body, give him recovery day by day. We pray for his wife and his children. We ask you, Lord God, to keep them at peace of mind throughout the process. We thank you for those who have given. Lord, we thank you for the one who we present today for a lifesaving award. We thank you, Father God, for his giving of himself unselfishly. We thank you, Father God, for an opportunity to serve this community. We ask that you give us direction to do those things that bring glory and honor to your name. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Will approve the minutes?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Council, please cast your vote.
Audience.
Huh?
Audience.
Does the audience have anything about the agenda today that they'd like to speak on? Okay. Please, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Council, there are no additions to the agenda, so we'll just need a motion to approve it.
Do I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Second.
Second. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Ceremonial matters.
Fire Department lifesaving award. Mr. Zagone, Mayor Chandler.
All right, council, thank you for this opportunity. On June 30th, Easton Dempsey was found at the bottom of the pool. That's little Easton over there and his mom and dad. These three trained individuals we're talking about today began lifesaving CPR. Due to their quick response and excellent skills, they for sure helped save the life of young Easton. One of them is Sarah Estes, one is Lisa Keys, and one is Josh Aspie. Josh is a paramedic on the fire department with us. Sarah is nurse practitioner and Lisa is a RN with the Bossier Parish school system. The thing about it is, I can't remember the exact year. I was trying to look it up. But shortly after I became fire chief in 2011, we had three pediatric drownings in one year. And we didn't get any of those back, unfortunately. We had no bystander CPR in any of those. And I have the awards for these. They were on scene. They started the initial CPR. I think five rounds of CPR and got a pulse back and started rescue breathing. And then we had Engine 9, Trauma 6, and Car 33 show up. And I do want to just mention them. You had Captain Griffin, Joey Brickner, Dylan Elliott on Engine 9. The paramedic on Trauma 6 was Chad Hart, and the EMT was John Fondren. And Car 33 was EMS supervisor Jimmy McGee that all showed up and helped out. I think Josh even rode to the hospital with the unit. But the outcome was excellent, right there, you can see. And he was too shy to shake my hand a while ago. But I'd like at this time to ask the mayor if he'd like to say something and maybe the family.
Well, I want to thank y'all. I mean, it's all been in the news. I thought it was great that the kid was saved and in good health and everything. And in doing that, I want to present y'all with a challenge coin for all you've done.
I'm Easton's father and, you know, you just never know how blessed you are to be in a community until... I think that was a thank you. You never know how blessed you are to be in a community until something like this happens. And for my wife and I, we'll never be able to repay y'all for what y'all did for us that day. But we'll also never be able to repay the community of Bossier and so many other people that gave their support and their prayers. You know, it's our hope that this doesn't happen to any more little ones. But we want to do everything we can, obviously, to raise awareness about pool safety and the importance of CPR and things like that, too. So, you can't talk to them. But again, we appreciate y'all having us. We appreciate y'all giving them the awards. They absolutely deserve it. So, thank y'all. We love y'all. Appreciate it. Tell them thank you. Say thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is for Sarah. All three of these are the Citizen Lifesaving Award. It's one of the highest honors the fire service can present as a citizen's lifesaving award, so.
All right, Josh.
All right.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Lisa.
Thank y'all once again for everything y'all do. We really appreciate it.
Adopted resolution honoring the service and sacrifice of grocery store workers during the COVID-19 crisis. First and final reading.
Second. Council, please cast your vote.
Comments from the audience?
I'm sorry, any comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Is there anyone here from the grocery store industry? I know we sent out several invites. Anybody? Come on, we ask that you come on up. Does council have certificates that they would like to present? I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas during our nation's fight against COVID-19, grocery store employees put themselves in harm's way to perform the variety of essential tasks necessary to keep food and other necessary items available to the citizens of Bossier City. And whereas these essential frontline workers kept the supply of food and other necessities available to citizens of Bossier City by putting their health and safety on the line to serve this community. And whereas grocery store employees have answered the call and carried out their critical mission of ensuring food and other necessities are available to feed our families during the COVID-19 crisis. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of Bossier City, Louisiana, in regular session convened does hereby recognize and applaud the contributions of grocery store workers during the COVID-19. Appreciates that grocery store workers answered the call to serve their community during these unprecedented times. Commandes the grocery store workers who risked their own health and safety, as well as the health and safety of their loved ones, to continue their work during the COVID-19 pandemic. Recognizes that some grocery store workers have been lost to COVID-19 as a result of their service and offers their loved ones our sincerest condolences. Recognizes the immense debt of gratitude we owe grocery store workers for minimizing the inevitable disruption to Bossier City citizens' daily lives and playing a critical role in protecting the health and safety of this community. The above and foregoing resolution was read in full and open and legal session convened on a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Smith and adopted on the 20th day of July, 2021.
My name is James McKenzie. I'm the club manager at Sam's Club. Thank y'all for this award. We appreciate it very much.
My name is Jay Holmes. I'm the district manager for Brookshires in the Shreveport-Bosier area. I want to first show appreciation for the council for recognizing our company and our partners. We're so grateful for our partners and our store managers for all they did. The long hours, the additional safety measures, the additional cleaning, the numerous policy changes. I'm sure you'll attest to it. It seemed like there was three or four per day that came out for us. So, just on behalf of Brookshire Grocery Company and all of our store employees and partners, we say thank you.
Hearing of appeal for Josh Greenwald, 5924 Wildcrest Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, for violation of City Ordinance Section 14 vicious and dangerous dog.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor. On July 4th, our animal control officer received a call from Mr. Pipes, who lives at 2200 Middle Creek Boulevard, stating his dogs were attacked by a pit bull who came across the street from 5924 Wildcrest. According to Mr. Pipe's statement, he, his son, and granddaughter were walking the three dogs while approaching the intersection of Middle Creek and Wildcrest. That pit bull charged across the street, went behind his husky and bit her tail. They tried to grab the dog's collar but weren't able to restrain it. Then the dog charged at their golden retriever but did not bite it. They again tried to restrain the dog and pushed it towards the street. What the dog got away, ran back across the street to his house where he was waiting for Mr. Greenwald. In Mr. Greenwald's statement, he acknowledges his dog was loose outside of its backyard. According to the City Ordinance 1461, "Dangerous dog" shall mean any dog that when unprovoked shall be deemed a dangerous dog if it, number one, bites, injures, or inflicts a bite on a human being or domestic animal either upon public property or those areas of private property that are unfenced and normally accessible to the public. And number two, chases or approaches a person upon the street, sidewalks, or public grounds in a terrorizing or menacing fashion or apparent attitude of attack. We believe that this case meets the requirements for deeming this dog dangerous. This is Mr. Pipes. He'd like to speak on his own behalf.
I don't think I have anything to add to the facts other than what y'all have in the report. My wife and I do walk by the deputy's house daily, usually on the other side of the street. The fact of the matter is, his dog was loose. My dogs were on leashes. The dog made a direct hit on my husky's rear end. You can judge from the pictures how bad she was bit. I don't think I have anything else to add.
Mr. Pipe.
Thank you.
What is your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. It's James Michael Pipes. I live at 2200 Middle Creek Boulevard.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenwald.
Okay.
My name is Josh Lee Greenwald. I stay at 5924 Wildcrest. It started on July 4th, as you could see probably in the report. I woke up about 12:45 in the afternoon after a long night out. Let my dogs out like usual. Was going to go to my wife's parents' house to spend 4th of July night there. And whenever I let my dogs out, about 20 minutes after that, I opened the door to let them back in. Called for my female and she didn't answer. My female is, her name's Sasha. She is a, according to the vet, a lab boxer mix. Whenever I called for her, she didn't come, which is very strange. She's been trained for the past three years professionally. Whenever she hears my command, she comes all the time. So, I went into my backyard. Just whenever I saw Mr. Pipes across the street and he yelled at me saying, "Hey, your dog just attacked my dog." So, I went inside, put my shoes on, went around to where my gate is, and I noticed my gate was opened. At that point in time, it struck my mind. I have no idea how my gates open. My gate is always secure and is never opened. So, I went out, addressed Mr. Pipes, asked him if his dog was okay. He said he did not know that he would have to check on it. I noticed, at that time, he also was walking a dog that had a muzzle on it. He also had two other dogs with him. They were all standing up. Whenever I asked him where my dog was, he pointed towards my house, went over there. His son was there. Had my dog up against the door like this. She was waiting for me to go let her inside. I let her inside, put her in her kennel, went back outside. Nobody was outside. I assumed they kept walking the dog. I assumed everything was okay. I went to address the matter. I noticed on my Ring camera on July 3rd, two kids came to my house. Same two kids that always come to my house asking for a ball that they kicked over my fence. They rang the doorbell for about, I don't know, three or five minutes. Nobody answered. They went over my driveway, around to the side where my gate was, and then they went back to their house. I went to the house where the kids live at, addressed the parents. They walked in, asked a few questions. They said that it was one of their friends that went into my backyard, threw my gate, got the ball, did not secure the gate. That matter has been addressed. On, I think it was the 4th. I don't know what time they came by, but I wasn't home. Animal Control came by my house. I wasn't home at the time whenever Animal Control came to my house on the 4th. I was already at my in-law's house. On the 6th, they came to my house and I was awake. And, see, I work nights, patrol for Bossier Sheriff's Office. So, whenever they come in the morning at 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, I'm asleep and I didn't answer the door. So, the 6th, they came by. They came by later in the afternoon. They finally got a statement from me. And the statement they have says... Got all these pictures. I don't know if y'all have my statement in the packet or not. I do. Okay. Perfect. Basically, what happens is what I just told you. I don't believe my dog was dangerous. I don't believe that she was unprovoked. Mr. Pipes and his wife have walked their dogs by my fence. Their dog's combined weight is probably around 160, 170 pounds. I don't believe one human being can control that much animal at a fence. Whenever he walks his dogs or she walks their dogs next to my fence, they fight at my fence. My fence, if you have seen my yard, it's not a completely enclosed privacy fence. It's, I don't know, maybe an inch, inch and a half gap between each board. You got a picture of it? Okay, okay. So, whenever they walk the dogs by my fence, they fight, maybe a minute at a time. Thanksgiving last year, 2020, his dogs got loose from his yard, fought my dogs at my fence for, I would say, more than a minute. This is my wife's uncle, Troy Phillips. He owns All Dogs Unleashed in Shreveport. He was at my house at the time on Thanksgiving. Him and my wife had to go outside, get his dogs taken back to his house. They were not a threat towards them by any means. They weren't wearing a collar. They were just fighting at my fence.
For the record, if the man's going to speak, can he state his name and address for the record?
Yes, go to the microphone there.
Sorry about that. Name's Troy Phillips. The business is All Dogs Unleashed. The address is 1240 Shreveport, Barksdale Highway, Suite 102.
Thank you.
Okay. But on Thanksgiving, yes, we, myself and Haley, his wife, took their dogs over to them. The wife answered the phone and their gate was open as well. I have been over at their property several different times, and she does walk the dogs along the fence line and they fight as well. So, if she feels there's a threat, why walk on that side of the fence when your house is on the other side? You know, and you know what happens, okay? And I have other things to say, too, but I just wanted to pretend to what he was just saying. Like, we did return the dogs. It's happened a couple of times as well.
My dog started training with Troy. He actually, before he started his business, took my dog to Dallas, where the main business is for All Dogs Unleashed, and he used her as a training partner to learn how to train the dogs over there. Since then, she's been trained professionally every day. She uses an e-collar. She listens to commands. She sits. She listens. She obeys. She waits. She's an ideal, perfect individual dog, in my opinion. I'm sorry. I'm trying to find the narrative. There it is. See, on the 6th, I believe, one of the agents came out, said he spoke with me and showed that the gate, I showed him that the gate was open. He said his neighbor's kids came into the backyard. According to Mr. Greenwald, the kids did not latch the gate properly. Right here, it said, "I informed Mr. Greenwald that we would be doing investigation on the attack and that his dog would be, that his dog could be deemed dangerous." I don't believe that there was an investigation done. According to the emails, I wrote my statement down on the 6th. I wrote my statement down on the 6th and provided Animal Control with my statement. On the 8th, Mr. Pipes emailed Jennifer Westerfield with the Bossier City Animal Control. He said, "Jennifer, could you call me and let me know what is happening with my problem, please? Thanks, Mike." It's two days after I gave my statement. The next day, Jennifer emailed him back and said, "Hi, Mr. Pipes. We're currently going forward with deeming the dog dangerous. I need your formal statement on what happened. You can either email me your statement or come into the office and write a statement. Thank you." Mr. Pipes, later on that day, on the 9th, provided his statement in an email. So, I guess what I'm getting at is I don't understand why there were, they would have an investigation done without a formal statement from Mr. Pipes, also three days after my statement was provided. Also, on the day of the attack, whenever I came back, I did not notice it at the time until I put my dog away and then got her back out later on that night. Sasha did not have any blood on her chest. She has a white chest. She has a tan dog, white chest, and white feet, okay? Just like a boxer. There was no blood on her chest. There was no blood on her mouth. There was nothing hanging from her teeth. Her teeth were completely clean. Only other thing I can, and I'm not trying to make any assumptions, the only other thing I can think of is the other dog that had a muzzle on while he was walking. I don't understand why you would have a muzzle on your dog unless it's a dangerous dog. Also, the attack happened, supposedly the attack happened. I have my dog here on my Ring camera at 1:02 PM. Also, I have Mr. Pipe's son here on my Ring camera at 1:15 PM with my dog Sasha. According to the narrative... According to the email... Trying to find the time, I'm sorry.
It's at the top.
It's at the top.
Top one.
Yeah, 2:30, yeah, right here. His son Joe, at around 2:30 PM, he was approached at the intersection of Middle Creek and Wildcrest with my dog, came charging out of my backyard. Well, obviously, my dog was already detained at 1:15 PM. At 1:28 PM, I'd already went to the neighbor's house with the kids, and he had come back to my house to address the situation that his friend, that his kid's friend had went into my backyard at 1:28 PM. If y'all want to see this, I can, I have, I could, I could hand this down if y'all want to see this.
So, if your dog, I'm just going to ask a crazy question. If your dog didn't bite Mr. Pipe's dog, but we got pictures of him, do you think he would really say that? That he would, if it was your dog, if he didn't, if your dog didn't bite his dog?
If he has pictures of the bite?
No, we have pictures of the bites. I'm just saying.
Right.
You don't think his dog, your dog bit his dog?
No, sir. I do not.
So, and I wasn't there, obviously, either. The only ones that were were himself. She wasn't with, from my understanding. But I have seen fights. I've known dogs that have been quarantined. When they don't know which dog did it, there was more than one dog on that walk. They had two others with them and the one with the... So, they had three dogs total, correct? You had, you had four.
You had four dogs.
You had four dogs yourself.
Four dogs out there.
How many with you?
Three, right?
I had three. I had three.
That's not three, okay, so he had three. What's to say one of their dogs didn't turn on the other dog when a scuffle started? I'm not saying Sasha did or did not do it. I've seen cases where they couldn't prove it and they've quarantined both dogs. You know, I mean, I've been bit by dogs and I didn't know which one it was and they've quarantined both dogs. Nobody can really say which one did it at that time. Dogs react when they react. As a dog trainer, and since I'm here, real quick, I'll just mention it while I'm at the mic. Since this has happened, we've had Sasha at my facility several times with other dogs. There's been no issues with any. Mr. Greenwald has video on camera as well. I do at the office. Um, but we haven't seen anything toward people or other dogs. Not saying it can't happen. It can obviously happen with any dog at any time. But the proof to say which dog did it, when you have four dogs involved, is hard to say. That's, that's how I just feel on it. But I've used Sasha for demos to like show customers and stuff how she is and all that. There hasn't been an issue, okay? Three years of working with her and she still comes to our facility, okay? Um, she is a good dog. It's an unfortunate circumstance. Somebody opened the gate. The Greenwalds are responsible dog owners. They volunteered to pay for the vet bill. The vet bill was supposedly seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now it's eight hundred and something dollars. Each price is different, you know? Um, I'm sorry, Mr., what's your last name? I'm sorry?
Pipes.
Mr. Pipes, thank you. Um, Mr. Pipes did mention that he wasn't worried about, he's just worried about the safety of people and stuff, correct? They have put locks on their gates and stuff like that since then.
Have y'all put locks on his gate?
Yes, sir, I have locks on my gate.
You didn't have them on them?
No, sir, not them. I do now.
That, that's one of the issues that you probably see. Dale, to wrap this thing up, do you have anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, sir. Uh, um, I mean, the simple fact was that his dog got out and it was eyewitness by Mr. Pipes and actually his son and granddaughter in the state that that dog bit their dog.
And just to clarify something, what was said, y'all, did y'all do or did not do an investigation?
Yes, they did an investigation. We got an initial statement from Mr. Pipes over the phone. We asked for his formal state, written statement before we made a judgment.
Mr. President, may I ask?
Sure.
When you said, Mr. Greenwald, that the dogs at the fence fight, are you talking about a fence fight between the fences between the dogs or do they really fight?
The fence is between the dogs. Uh, whenever he walked his dogs by my fence, my dogs are in my backyard and they fight at the fence.
At the fence?
Yes, sir.
That don't get touched, okay?
That's the, that's the corner of my house. I live on a corner.
Okay.
This is their whole fence line and that's where the pipes will walk and their dogs will fight through that fence. Even though they know their dogs fight there, they still continue.
Does that include Sasha?
Sasha's inside of.
Sasha's inside the fence.
Is, is she doing the fence fighting as well?
Well, of course, whenever, whenever their dogs are attacking through the fence, yes.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's what she does.
There's a history between the dogs. She reacts, yeah.
If I could ask you a question, Dale, this is the first incident, correct?
Yes, we have no report of the dogs getting out before. No one, no one called in about their dogs being out before.
So there's a lot of variables here, a lot of, uh, vague, uh, information, uh, but the, the, I have a, a dog, we did DNA tests, seventy-five percent lab, twenty-five percent boxer. Strong as an ox, okay? Uh, I love that dog, just like you, like you love your dog. Uh, things happen, you know, and, and I know that if my dog got out and there was an incident, uh, I, if I, if I were in that situation, uh, I, I, my son loves the dog. He lives in South Louisiana. I would get rid of my dog and, and give it to my son. Because if it happens again and we've seen it happen again, the dog gets put to sleep. And, uh, you know, it's unfortunate when you live in the city, y'all, you're a responsible dog owner, but I know things happen. It, it, it does, but it, it, it doesn't mean that, that we can overlook something. Uh, so I, my, uh, I guess I, I'm just relieved that this is the first action on this and that, uh, you know, if, if you keep the dog, then there's things that he has to do.
And, and, and we'll say that he has come by and paid the fees and fines and if, and if you decide to overturn it, then we will refund everything.
Exactly what you mean about.
Refund everything.
Uh, my dog doesn't do it. I know what you're talking about. It's, they're dogs, you know? Uh, but when there, there's no fence, then, uh, you know, incidents happen, so. I, I just, those are my comments. I just wanted to share that.
Counsel, any other comments? Phillips, would you, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Pipes.
Could I have one rebuttal?
You can.
Uh, uh, number one is, uh, we no longer walk on his side of the street. We walk on the east side of the boulevard uh, because of an incident over a year ago where the dogs were at each other at the fence. So therefore, we walk on our side. We do cross, uh, Middle Creek onto Wildcrest at the corner. Um, I also have a statement here from my son that he witnessed the dog bite. And it's signed by two people who witnessed him write it and sign it, if y'all would like to have that.
Yeah, you can, uh, submit that to a clerk right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Phillips, would you uphold, uh?
Okay, so the, the, what you'll need to do is you'll either vote to, I mean, make a motion to overturn animal control. You'd make no motion and animal control stands. And he can appeal it to district court.
Counsel, does anybody have a motion? So we're gonna deem it dangerous. Please, and I know you will Dale, explain to them what happens if, if it does again. That's, that's, that's the big part.
And you'll explain to them about the district court process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pipes?
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Adopted ordinance authorizing Mayor Tommy Chandler to execute the attached agreement with N T B Associates, Inc. And appropriating three hundred thousand dollars from the Walter O Bigby Carriage Way Fund for services to be provided in conjunction with said agreement. Final reading.
So move second.
David, would you like to explain to that?
Yeah, this is, uh, going forward with the new contractor JB James on the Walter O Bigby Carriage Way Phase Two North. Um, we will continue to require the, uh, services of N T B for ongoing construction issues with the contractor. So this is basically what I would consider a deposit and we will draw against that as needed for N T B to provide clarification to the contractor JB James.
Counsel, any questions? Do you have any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to appropriate a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, a hundred and sixteen thousand, six thousand dollars and sixty-eight cents from the L D E Q S R, S R F loan C S twenty-two eleven oh three dash zero two to be used to supplement the already appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ordinance number thirty-six of two thousand and twenty, the Waller Avenue lift station. Final reading.
So move.
Second. Ben, this is, this is additional money, you know, uh, for that lift station. I know they did a lot of work out there.
Yes, sir. This is additional money and it's also reconciling all the project costs that were incurred on there. So it's more than just construction. There's construction inspection and things like that. So there was an additional change order on the project for concrete work and cleaning up that area and then reconciling that whole appropriation by the council.
So we're done with that one?
Yes, sir, it's complete.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel, any questions? Who has a question?
Questions from the audience.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to approve report of change order number one and number two for the L T R I Louisiana Technical Research Institute, Bojor, with an increase in project cost of eighty thousand, fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents from the two thousand and sixteen sales tax bond issue. Final reading.
So move second.
Counsel, any questions? Do you have any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, introduce an ordinance to approve report of final change order for the Melrose Extension to Plantation Drive Project. First reading.
So move.
Second. So we're completely done with Melrose now, huh? Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bojor City by annexing approximately one point one 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 acres of land located at seventeen fifty-five Swan Lake Road, Bojor City, Louisiana, seven eleven eleven. It's for the Sterling Medical Bojor LLC. First reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries and counsel, that one will not come back before you till August the third due to a longer advertising requirement for those. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate four hundred thousand dollars to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Project Fund to be used towards expanding the parking lot at the Bojor City Medical, I mean Municipal Complex. First reading.
So move second.
Where's the expansion gonna be at, Bill?
Doesn't matter, I'm out there, somewhere out there.
So even today, when I came to park, um, it's for the main parking lot right here, directly across the street. Um, and it's, you know, we've got people parking in the grass before council meetings and things like that, so. Uh, it's preliminary, that cost estimate, we were a bit conservative with those numbers. We think once we get an engineering design on that and get everything out to bid, uh, we'll get, we'll get more refined numbers on that parking lot.
Is it going to straight back to where the, where the old restaurant was?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're gonna tie in the, uh, there's a little walk, sidewalk back there for the libraries where we're gonna tie all that together.
Okay. About how many spaces we're gonna have?
I knew you were gonna ask me that.
We'll find out next time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There should be a little diagram in your packet, but if not, um, I'll, I'll shoot that out to everybody.
Ben, one thing I would like to add, if we can not go with the new, um, compact parking places where you can't pull a pickup truck in, it'd be nice to go back to the old days. You can actually pull in and back out of a parking spot without hitting anybody.
It's interesting you mentioned that, cause I was having a hard time parking.
That parking lot can be designated for normal vehicles and then.
Well, we might could restripe that whole parking lot due there as part of the process.
That might be a consideration.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to fund improvements to the Shady Grove and Rome Street Lift Stations at a cost of four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to come from the L D E Q loan C S twenty-two eleven oh three dash zero two and the sewer contingency fund. First reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Just please state your name and your address.
Brian Hammons, one hundred Rosemont, Bojor City. Um, I just have a question. Is this gonna fix the problem that we're having in South Bojor with the lift stations specifically in Shady Grove? With, um, all the torn up yards. I know you're having to reroute water, sewer down through ditches, everything like that, um, in this area. Is this, this gonna fix the problem? So people can get back to normalcy?
Yeah. Ben?
Counsel, this particular project, um, is not designed to specifically address every issue we've got in South Bojor. Um, there is an active project, a several million dollar project going on down around Norman and Shady Grove. We call it Basin twenty-five, B C twenty-five, so there's been a lot of sewer rehabilitative work going on that's going to help. Um, you know, that system dates back many, many years and was never sized to handle, um, all of that flow. It seems like as that subdivision was developed, it just kept extending and extending and extending. So we actually, um, are researching right now. We have sewer model, modelers looking at some of the more pressing, what we call sanitary sewer overflow issues and considering adding another lift station right at the intersection of Norman and Shady Grove right there, because that's the far end of that collection system. And not taking all of that sewer further down and getting caught up with everything else, but picking it up and pumping it directly to the wastewater plant. So we've got contracts on that or actively researching that. It's a problem. It's been a problem for a while. It, it exacerbates itself when we have all of this rain. The rain just filters into the ground and begins inundating, um, that sewer system. So instead of just conveying sewer, we're conveying a lot of stormwater as well.
I understand that, so I just, just wanted to look there for a second.
Yes, sir, we're looking at it really hard, um, and hopefully, um, we'll, we'll have some good news to report to the council and some potential solutions for all of that.
Okay.
This is gonna help, but I don't think it, it's the silver bullet.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, I just want to thank you for all your work on Shady Grove. We've been in contact a lot with the issues.
It's a war zone out there right now.
Yeah, I lived in Shady Grove twelve years. Uh, the sewer backed up in the street back then. Uh, but, uh, I do appreciate the work that's being done. It's an enormous project. Retrofitting sewer lines in an old subdivision.
There's a lot. You have sidewalk work going on, um, street panels being replaced, sewer projects, so there's a lot of work happening down there.
I don't think there's many cities that would do this.
Yeah, well.
It's a.
No pain, no gain, so.
And I appreciate.
I was down there yesterday and, Ben, just see, I, I can meet, uh, just meet for a few minutes.
Sure.
Cause I got some things down there that been happening the last few days I need to talk to you about.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, Ben, what is the, what is the timeline again to wrap all of the current projects uh, that are going on down there?
I would say we're in the home stretch, you know, Mother Nature's just, I, I can't.
Right.
I'm not gonna put on record what I think that would be because I can't predict what the weather's like, but you know, when we get torrential downpours, just know that a project, every project in the city, when that happens, is delayed.
Gotcha.
Um, but they are making hay there, um, you know, Lawler Construction's the contractor there. They're a very reputable firm, doing a lot of good work. Um, I would give or take six weeks, you know, and then it'll be under warranty and we'll have other things we gotta work on there, but they're doing a lot of cleanup and dress up right now.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Where's the chief at? He was there. Oh, did you want to get, talk about that chief? Thank you. Just for the new guys, he'll explain, we did, this is something we do every year, so.
Sure.
Not the new guys, I mean, the new councilman and the new mayor, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Bojor City Police Department has applied for this federal grant since two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, our agency received a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. However, the award for two thousand and twenty-one is forty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars, which will be split between us and the Bojor Parish Sheriff's Office. The Bojor City Police Department will receive twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents to be used for our annual armed robbery task force as well as funding our additional uh, legal update and extra patrol of the Louisiana Boardwalk as well as conducting follow-up investigations with sex offenders. This additional funding does not cost our taxpayers a dime. It's a federal grant which may be used for local initiatives, technical assistance, training, personnel, equipment, supplies and contractual support as well as information systems for law enforcement. We feel this grant is served better by placing additional officers on the street during the holiday season to augment our patrol divisions as well as act as a deterrent to those who wish to prey on our local businesses as well as our citizens during the holidays. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Uh, no, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for continuing to apply this, um, keeping businesses and residents safe during the holiday season. It's why people shop here. and residents safe during the holiday season is why people shop here and live here in Bojor City. So thank you for applying for this again and keeping this going.
Thank you each and every one of you for your support of the police department. We certainly appreciate it, and the men and women, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Chief, stay right there for a minute.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, so anybody that'd like to get up and speak on this, this is the time to do it. So we open the public hearing. Seeing there's no one to speak, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Adopt a resolution endorsing the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, first and final reading.
Some of.
Second. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Somebody's got a cell phone going off, so.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, repealing Resolution Number 57 of 2021 and reenacting a resolution declaring a moratorium on any purchases of city vehicles, whether budgeted or not, with the exception of vehicles to maintain fire, police, and EMS operations until legislation can be adopted to allow for a policy for said purchases.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, counsel?
Uh, one, one quick question. So until legislation can be adopted, are, are we gonna have a...
Could we, excuse me, remind people to please put their phones on silent? Excuse me, Mr. Smith, I just wanted you to have the floor uninterrupted, so.
Thank you, Marshall. All right, so my question is, are we gonna have a committee that's gonna work together to adopt this legislation? What's, what's this process?
We're, I've talked to Mr. Darby, he's probably gonna head up, and we can talk afterwards. There will be two people on it, just to start, get things rolling.
Okay.
Again, just to get you involved and some things like that. But we'll probably start that this week or early next week.
Okay.
Any questions, other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, my name's Kerry Chandler, my address is 2924 Heather Lane here in Bojor, and my question about number seven, probably a twofold question, what is Resolution Number 57?
That's what we did initially. We just, we didn't, I didn't think about adding emergency, exception for the fire and place for emergency stuff only. You know, everything else will still come to us for, be approved. If they need something on emergency, whether it's a truck or whatever, they can go ahead and buy it, the two chiefs. Okay, all right, thank you. We just wanted to clarify that, so they would have the money available. Any other questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution nominating for confirmation by the Bojor City Council Angela Williamson as Director of Finance, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Is, uh... Is she here, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Where's she at? Oh, there she is. Would you like to come up, Miss Angela, and say a few words?
Just wanna thank you, Mayor Chandler, and thank the city council. Looking forward to working with all of you and everyone here at the city of Bojor. I know everyone here wants what's best for the city and is dedicated to ensuring the city continues to grow and prosper, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to contribute to those goals. Thank you.
We're honored to have you. Have you, y'all got, have you got a start date?
The 26th.
I just wanted to add, we, Councilman Williams and I and the mayor met with Angela, and I was duly impressed, and you come with high regards and recommendations throughout the community. So we look forward to having you as part of the team.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you have some good people working up there, too, like we said.
Yes, I've heard, good things.
Ms. Williamson, did they tell you that the budget process started 30 days after you?
They're already working on it.
Counsel, any other questions, mayor?
I want y'all to vote her in before I get to talk. I ain't voted her in.
She's gonna get voted in.
No, I want to thank all the council for, for, you know, approving my appointment. She is, I've talked to her many, many times over the past months and stuff like that, and she is really gonna be a blessing to us and help out Molly and all of them upstairs. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Angela.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, reappointing Bob Brown for confirmation by the Bojor City Council as Director of Community Development, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Bob, anything you'd like to say, or? Not with me, huh?
Sure.
Thank you, Bob. Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Bob, for all you've done, and hope we can do this more, more down the road, too. And thank you for all you do for the city. Thank you very much.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Audience?
Oh, I thought I did it. Anything from the audience? You'd like to say anything?
Just making sure.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, reappointing Rodney Orr for confirmation by the Bojor City Council as Director of Fleet Services, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Rodney, you'd like to say anything?
Yeah.
Getting skinny there, Rodney.
I want to thank Brad, my campaign manager.
You needed one, huh? Counsel, any questions? Mayor?
That was good, Rodney. That will, that will go down in history.
Short and sweet.
Great speech.
Any questions from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Orr. I appreciate you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one fire communications employee and the promotion of one fire communications employee to replace one position due to retirement, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, reappointing John Allen Thomasek III for confirmation of the Bojor City Council as Director of Human Resources, first and final reading.
So moved. Second. Counsel, any questions? Where is it? Is he here? Oh, there. Would you like to come up and say anything?
I just thank y'all for the opportunity.
Wait a minute, you gotta come up here for Rodney. We want to hear your speech next, rather than...
Yeah.
My speech definitely is not as good as Rodney's, but thank y'all. Thank y'all for the opportunity and past six years.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did we ask the audience? If we didn't, we'll do it again. Any questions from the audience? Mayor?
I just thanked him, I appreciate him, yes, sir.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time property standards clerk to replace the position due to resignation, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Kerry Chandler, 2924 Heather Lane. I'm dealing with the property standards office about a piece of property that's on, it's not on my street, my street is a little dead-end street, but on Clover, Cloverdale. And it's a, it's a real eyesore, because I have to look at it going in to my neighborhood and then coming out of my neighborhood. And that address is 3101 Cloverdale Place. And I've talked with Mr. Smith about it. I had a conversation with him last Thursday over it, and I've talked with the lady, I think her name is Gina, that runs the property standards office, and she seemed to get the ball rolling, but right now I'm not getting any feedback from her office. I've left three, three voicemails about this piece of property, and I know one of the things that Mayor Chandler said he wanted to do when he came is to make our city look presentable, and I'd like to hold you, hold you to that, mayor. And I do realize that, I don't know whether this office is a, is a reactive office or proactive office, so I, with not being manned, manned very well, but, but it's not, not just my neighborhood. You can drive up and down Shed Road, and you can see where the, where the property standards are not doing well, you know. So if, if, if the council could look into this a little more deeply and maybe allocate some more money and be, be proactive with, with this, with these issues, I would appreciate it from a, from a property owner, because it detracts, no, no matter, no matter what I do to my property, no matter how many dollars I spend on it, the first thing you see is grass waist-high, limbs down, hedges 25 feet up in the air. It doesn't do any good, you know, I seem like I'm just wasting my money.
As a matter of order, Mr. President, you speak to the item on the agenda. I realize the importance of what you're saying, sir, and we can take the name and address, and the mayor and the council can address it. But we have to speak to what's on the agenda at the appropriate time.
Thank you much, have a great day.
But it is noted.
Counsel, any, any questions about hiring this part-time person? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order for the Tinsley Park Expansion Project with an increase of 31 days.
So moved.
Second.
Ben? I know we had this little meeting the other day. How many did they ask for? Is this the second quarter, or?
No, sir.
This was just...
This is only the first quarter.
Oh, still the first quarter working on?
Yeah, we couldn't come to conclusion on the second quarter, so we didn't, we have not formalized that. Currently, city's legal departments looking over there.
So I think I remember the days on the first one, first quarter. So I think I remember the days they asked for the first quarter.
Yeah, it's 31-day, well, they asked for a lot more than 31 days in the first quarter. We, we came to, we landed on 31, you know, just looking at all the information we had.
And I know Chris called me yesterday, just, I just tried to get him up to date, you know, of what's going on and the deals, the things we're dealing with out there, and, Chris?
I guess my, my only concern is we're 200 some odd days behind schedule already.
We are not quite that many behind, but maybe from the original...
From the original project.
From the original date of completion, but even with that, we're about 90 days behind schedule based on work completed to date and the currently approved time, additional time for that project.
And we feel confident that 30, given 31 more days is gonna kind of jumpstart the process. They're gonna be working weekends, they're gonna be trying to finish this project quickly.
I feel confident that they were due 31 weather delays.
It was a rainy first quarter, and we, like we talked about with them in our meetings we had with them, you know, like I said, they, not to get in too much, but they asked for a lot more.
Mr. President, may I ask, what percentage of the project is completed today? Do you have a number?
They are, it's in your little packet there, and I'll have a slide on the project, but they are to date. We are 73% complete, and 88% of the construction time has elapsed. So even with second quarter, it might go from 88 to 85, they're still gonna be, based on that comparison, behind.
And that's related to weather mostly, not manpower?
I didn't say that.
Okay, so it's a combination of both, maybe?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay, and has there been any prompting on the part of the city?
Yes.
Monetarily or just verbally?
We've been issuing letters, emails, we meet every week, every other week on the project to make sure that we're keeping things moving on, on task and on schedule. We don't do that on any other project in the city. So it's very intense, a lot of moving parts, it's a big project. So from, from my vantage point, as much pressure as the city can put on the contractor, we've been pressing. And they are responding, you know, the project moving along, it, it's starting to take shape. Some of the more larger, visible aesthetic, you know, milestone pieces of the puzzle are coming together out there. But there's just a lot of little items, you know, it's quite a number of ball fields, it's a very sophisticated, intense project. And we want to make sure on behalf of the city of Bojor that when the contract is complete and they bequeath that park over to the city, that, you know, Parks and Rec is proud of, of what they've got out there and that everything functions in accordance with its intended purpose.
So, so being behind as they are, does that mean that we can't have the sporting activities that may have been scheduled for this season?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the current plan right now is we're, we've got a full court press on the existing fields. They're getting close to being done. You know, our, our pressure throughout the last several months is try to get that part of the park as a partial substantial completion, and allow Parks and Rec to take over ownership of that once it's, you know, capable of being used for its intended purpose, and at least have half the park open for use. So the, the current press is to get that done in August.
Okay. There was some pretty bad hiccups, and just to, not to get in too deep, we did have our attorney at the last meeting, so that should tell you something.
Yeah, and to that point, I just confirm with Mr. Jacobs that a letter has been sent by our city attorney, so we're going through the proper channels of navigating, and I'll keep my words in general terms, navigating through the legal system in the correct fashion and manners, so.
That's the big boot. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, we have some reports by the man at the podium.
I figured I'd just stay up here. The one, the first item there, update on underground pipe issues. I handed out, you guys should have in front of you, just a little sheet, sort of looks like this, or doesn't sort of look like this, it looks like this. I did get confirmation, Chris, on the B C 25 in Shady Grove, they're doing a final walkthrough on July 27th. So pending punchless items and things like that, the project will be substantially complete shortly thereafter, so they're closer than I thought.
Okay, very good.
So, you know, just don't really want to bore you, but I, I felt like it was important to put some context to the particular underground issue we're having here at Airline and Murphy Street. One thing we've noticed that, you know, the Red River's now in, in a pretty steady decline. It's been doing that since early June, and coincidentally, as the river elevations have started to decline, this particular area and other areas, we've seen some shifting of the soil, you know, pavements and things subsiding along with that. You know, there's a technical term for that. I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but... You know, there's a technical term for that. I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but around these parts, we call it running sand. So as the river comes up, you know, the water goes one way and as the river goes down, the water starts moving another way. And that action creates some weird unforeseen subsurface anomalies. So on June fifth, we were notified by DOTD that they observed a void underneath Airline Drive near Murphy Street. Originally, we believed this to be due to a failure in the storm drain pipe that was in that location because it had sunk and a lot of sand and debris had gotten into that line. Contractor came out under warranty, that was Wicker Construction, and repaired the storm drain line. And less than a couple of weeks later, we got another call from DOTD indicating that they were observing continued settlement in that area. So we pressed the pause button, started really digesting what was going on, engaged a geotechnical engineering firm, Artiman and Associates, had their senior engineer, Mark Woodard, come out with us. And we walked that area on July eighth to start developing some corrective measures. And while we're out there looking at that area, we still have concerns from that area all the way down to Barksdale Boulevard, wanting to make sure that we get a hard look at what's going on in that corridor. We even did some research here in the engineering office and this has been ongoing for decades and decades and decades in that area. So on July twelfth, after meeting with the geotechnical engineer and in coordination with DOTD, we had Wicker Construction come back and place sand backfill. So we took out the concrete panels, filled that hole in with sand. And that was for two purposes, one, to make it safe, a car can't fall off into the hole, nor can a pedestrian. But the other was to prematurely load that area with a heavy fill material. So we put that load on, we've got monitoring points in there and we're going out with GPS equipment regularly and determining if we're getting any subsidence. And I wasn't able to collect, you know, any, any detailed information on that prior to this meeting, but visually, we have not observed any additional settlement out there. So I can provide more information once I have that in hand. The Geotex will be out on the twenty-seventh. You'll see some large soil boring rigs. We're gonna take three borings, one there at that location and two, I call it further south, but I think in that area it's west. You know, so further west towards the river. And really get a look at what's going on. Those are gonna be deep soil borings to really understand what's happening in the strata there. So one thing I included in your packet, this is not singled out just for Bossier City. Bossier Parish has been dealing with this in several of their areas of oversight. They have a standard detail and I just put it in that packet. We've been working with them to, you know, get some, some ideas as to how to address this. We're not saying that's gonna be the end-all, be-all way. We want to make sure that we do it properly. But the parish is taking examples from South Louisiana where they have more perched water, you know, uglier soils, you know, swelling fat clays and things like that. And they actually put in a subsurface piling system to support those structures. So that's pretty conservative design and that may in fact be what we need, but that's an example of, of how to approach that. So it's ongoing. You've probably seen all of the enhanced traffic control measures and things like that. So we're pushing that to get some, get some closure and, and get some good information in so that we can correct the problem, not see that happen anymore in the future.
Hope so.
Yeah, no hope. Hope is not a course.
Do we have any, do we have any areas like that where we've put pilings in, in this area?
Pilings like this, no. One of Bossier City's standard details, we put pilings under manholes. You know, it's, it's uncommon, but it happens where we have poor soils and we don't want those manholes to sink. We'll drill piles and set the manholes on top of those piles. We have, I say the city has a standard detail for poorer soils where we build up a pretty thick aggregate foundation that, that's underneath the pipe and then we go from there. And as a matter of fact, that's what we used in this particular instance. So there's theories out of there, well, if we used all of that, why is it happening? The best synopsis that, that I've gotten, now that hasn't been supported by any data from the soil borings, is the old line, when we excavated everything out to make this repair back in, you know, before February, it was complete in February, had sunk so deep that it was, the top of the pipe was below the required invert to connect those manholes together. It was encased in concrete and impossible to get out of the ground. So we shored everything up, benched on top of that, set our new pipe in and, and compacted everything back. And there's some concern that that action led to, you know, exacerbating those, those pumping soils and it didn't rear its head until we started getting, you know, the water in and out of that location. So that's just a theory, that hasn't been proved. But it, those heavier loads, you know, when you get into a weak soil is, are potentially what causes a problem. We went back, we took soil borings when that project was done. And there was a fine strata, a small strata in there was pretty weak, but the remaining soils above and below that, pretty strong. But we didn't go, you know, seventy feet deep for that, that bore. So we're, we're gonna be looking at what's happening deep in that area that may be causing this problem because that main there is almost eighteen feet deep in the ground, so it's, it's complicated. Any other questions on that? Thank you.
Finance Department, monthly finance report for month ending June twenty-twenty-one.
Good afternoon, counsel. You have before you the financials for the month ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. The first page is the revenue report. We are currently running a hundred and nineteen percent to budget. Gaming revenue is still doing extremely well and is holding steady for the third month in a row. Sales tax is also doing well, up nineteen point nine percent compared to June of twenty-twenty. The month-to-month comparison is still reflecting COVID from last year, so the twenty-twenty-one figures are still significantly higher. Page two is the expense report. We are currently running nine percent under budget. The alternative fuel stations are notably over budget, but so is the revenue at a hundred and twenty-seven percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously stated, sales tax revenue is up nineteen point nine percent compared to this time last year. This comparison is the tail end of the COVID shutdown in twenty-twenty, so the twenty-twenty-one numbers are still higher. The last page is the manning report. We are up eight employees from last month. The total employees as of the end of June is six hundred and seventy-two. We are currently twenty-two employees below the budgeted total for twenty-twenty-one of six hundred and ninety-four. Are there any questions?
What are we doing on water and sewer?
We're doing.
Did he do that last month? You did?
No, I didn't. I, I think Ben was not here last, I don't think he gave one last month.
I weighed in suspense.
I, I don't have a, an answer for you right now. I've, I've just got the June financials, like yesterday or Friday, so I'm, I'm still running those numbers.
I just wanted.
I'll, I'll make sure to report to the council and all that.
Whatever. You know, if you need additional assistance or whatever, but I want to make sure we stay on top of everything monthly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Ben, I guess you're next, huh? What'd you sit down for?
Have a break.
Musical chairs here. Hot potato. Okay, monthly engineering report. Currently, we've got a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars in ongoing design and construction projects. A hundred and twenty-eight million of that is currently under construction. Six projects in the design are bid based, twenty projects under construction and seven subdivisions entering the construction phase. So Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way is complete, less one particular item, and that is a gate. And everybody talks about COVID and blah, blah, blah. Once we get the gate, that's for Edwards Street installed, we will close that project out. Swan Lake Road, they are currently eighty-six percent complete based on the pay apps that have been submitted. If you've been out there, they look, for all intents and purposes, complete, less some final cleanup. We're working on some striping challenges, shall I say, at the intersection of Monica Lot and Swan Lake. I've got some feedback from the design professional of record this evening, working with the construction management firm, Beast Engineering, to render a final decision on what we need to do with that intersection, complete that work and close this project out. Melrose Drive Extension, that project is complete. This will probably be the last slide you see on this. Citizens Bank Drive, again, that project is complete. Coleman Street, they have geared up and are blowing and going now on what we would call the second phase of that work. Some of that being storm-related. We were also working with the utility companies, still working with the utility companies to get some of the older power and telephone and cable lines out of the way. The only thing we have left there, Mr. President, is the removal of a guy wire. Everything else has been pulled and they've been.
They got the poles out too?
Yes, sir.
I got the email where that's going to, but I don't know if they're.
They did. So they've been coordinating with Specialty Trac Ho out there and hopefully we'll get some good weather and get this project done. Highway seventy-one street skate project, that was a little ahead of schedule. They're eighty percent complete with seventy-four percent of the time elapsed. It's looking good out there.
Ben, if we could get that on the grass mowing schedule, that the grass is three feet tall. It's a beautiful sidewalk, but we have tall grass.
Those trees got sprinklers on them?
They do, actually.
In their usual rotation because it's a new sidewalk.
No, and I, I don't know, I'll, I'll look into it, but right now, that project site is the contractor's project site. So my thinking is we get them to cut the grass while they're out there and clean it up. That might not be the correct interpretation, but right now, that's what I'm thinking.
Hey, if they do it, that'd be good thinking, huh?
Yeah, they need to, they need to clean that area, but they're close. Tinsley Athletic Ball Fields, we've talked about this. I don't know that we need to rehash, but seventy-three percent complete, eighty-eight percent time elapsed, ninety-five days behind. That gives you a good picture there though of the new concession building, kind of the gateway sign going into the facility. You can see, you know, the new backstop and dugouts and things like that behind that picture. So it is starting to look good out there. They're making progress. Clifford Almond Park Restrooms, a little behind, but taking shape. They've got block coming up. Public Service Commission Lighting Project, specifically Brookshire Grocery Arena is really the only component of that project that's left to complete. We've been working with the Public Service Commission to recoup their portion, that three hundred and fifty thousand portion of the grant funds that the city received. We're going, you'll be seeing, next council meeting, a change order request to extend and do a little more lighting improvement out there. So we've been able to stretch those dollars a long way. If you haven't been out there, it looks, looks really good. Citywide Street Improvement Projects, this is, you know, one of the major focuses of the engineering department right now. All phases of construction, of, of this project are under construction and that's including the city's, citywide sidewalks. We're seeing a lot of, of, I want to say windfall, but as we've been in those projects, we're, we're learning that the subsurface conditions aren't as bad as we had planned for. We were pretty conservative with our plan, so therefore, the pricing is coming back to the city and allowing us to do more work in these districts. We were out in Stone Bridge last week and this week looking at some additional work out there. That subdivision's over twenty years old. We've been doing the same in some of the other districts. So as we get requests that come into the engineering department for various areas, we include those, prioritize those and, and try to get that work completed on the streets.
Did, did we, can you just say, yeah or no? I know it's a big thing. Did we ever figure out what we're gonna do with Michael Street?
I need to visit with you and Councilman Darby on that. That's on my list. I know what I want to do, but you're gonna need Mr. Darby involved in that. So just for the rest of the council, Michael Street is in poor condition, but it also has drainage problems. We've got a, what we believe to be a excellent number from the contractor out there working to improve that. It will take your district a little bit more money out of, out of your district to complete that. But we believe just to go in and do the pavement only and not address the drainage there wouldn't be the right decision. So we've got some ideas. We'll, we'll get with y'all. I can visit with y'all after the meeting if you'd like.
I know the contractor's humping on them roads though. They're not gonna.
They are, and I think all the roads in Darby's district are complete, at least the ones we had as priority one. So that's done. They're, they're anxious to get on Michael Street. We're holding them at bay until we can come to a final decision there. Any other questions on the street program? So just kind of a snapshot of work being done there. Private Development, got a lot of that going on, Saint Charles Court, Unit Nine, Duckwater Landing, Unit One. That particular project, Duckwater Landing, is in an unusual lack of electricity mode there. So they've got a lift station there, a lot of the infrastructure's been put in. We've been working with the developer on that to come up with some alternative solutions until the power company can come in. But, you know, when they need to issue certificate of occupancies for those homes, we need to make sure that there's ways of providing services to those customers. Golden Meadows Village, Unit Number Two, Redwood Place, Unit Number Twelve, Enclave, Number Three Estates, Number Four and Retreat, Number Five. That's down in the preserve, Retreat Number Four, and then Village at Tiburon, Unit Number Fifteen. And that one's about done. We're working on all of the testing of the water main out there. I'm sure that that doesn't even scratch the surface for the need for residential in our area. Project out to bid or in design, Highway Seventy-One Lighting, Phase Two. Working with the engineer right now to make sure we get the right fixture selection. The South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvements, those are in design. Highway Seventy-One, left turn lane at Golden Meadows Subdivision. We'll be getting an engineer to work on the stages of study and design en pronto. Same with the Tinsley Drainage Basin's improvements. That was a project that the council recently approved and we're gonna engage an engineering firm to help resolve those problems. Just honorable mentions, Urban Systems, they presented to the council back on the first. An additional data will be collected once school traffic normalizes per DOTD requirements, if y'all recall. We've got some coordination going on right now with the Bossier Parish Police Jury and DOTD, looking at left turn lane extensions for access to I two twenty at Benton Road. Working on the traffic signalization software upgrades. We've got Kansas City Southern, I think that's an important, I know that's created a lot of log jams there on Hamilton Road. They are to be complete and open that road by August second. So get them out of there and get that north-south route opened up. And then we had gotten approval for the installation of the left turn signal at Airline Drive and Green Acres Boulevard. Going on to Innovation Drive, there were some issues there. That signal is installed and working, so thank y'all for that. And then Property Standards, I did take that note. I'll be getting with them later on that particular address, but they're blowing and going.
You know, Mr. Rogers was out for a couple of days, right?
I didn't know that.
I, I talked to him a while ago. He had to go get tested for, for COVID.
Okay, I'll get with you on some of that. That's all I've got. Any questions from the council?
How are we doing on our pilot program as far as increasing the integrity of the streets and participating with the contractors? You remember we had talked about that?
Oh, it's going well.
Do you want to explain, since we have the new council and new administration, something we initiated, what, a year ago or so?
Yes, sir. So some of the areas where we're doing pavement improvements, the city's. the city's been back there multiple times and, and we would contend that those pavements never really reached their, their intended service life. So Bossier City has a standard pavement design, kind of a one-size-fits-all. In most cases, that works fine, but when you get into areas where we've got boulevards, you got heavy cement trucks and trash trucks and things rolling through there, um, there are places where the pavements, uh, Tiburon being one, um, example, just coming to mind, there are plenty others where those pavements did not withstand, you know, the test of time. And so we are working, um, to implement a more conservative design in those heavier trafficked areas based on good geotechnical engineering work and in concert with the engineers developing those subdivisions to make sure that we get pavements that um, won't need to be repaired, once the city takes ownership of those, which is, you know, they go in and after two years, they become the cities. Well, they look brand new after two years and then by some of these places at the five-year mark, we're performing pretty expensive repairs. So one place we, we put in particular, just as a matter of note, was down on the Preserve. Um, there, the Parkway Entrance, um, we, we didn't feel as though that entrance got the analysis it really needed. We worked with the developers, um, contributed, the city did. Um, fifty percent of the differential in cost to beef up that pavement, which equated to less than four grand. But we think over time, that probably will recoup itself to the tune of four hundred grand. You know, so it's, it's a good thing for both, you know, the citizens and the cities being, uh, you know, friendly, if you will, to the development community that, you know, they've planned these developments and their capital resources based on that typical standard. Um, so the city's saying, well, maybe to stave off some increased expense way down the line, what would it take to get these pavements a little bit more, uh, thicker, uh, for that particular condition?
Can we participate?
Yes, sir.
So
I don't know of any community that does that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions about anything today?
Mr. President, uh, just want to appreciate our city clerk for assisting us in that recognition of those who provide services to the city during the pandemic. The new council members might recognize that to have someone of her caliber to assist is always, it makes us look good, makes everything easier, and she does a great job always, and I want to thank her.
She's a one-man band.
She is a one-man band.
That's right. Anything else? Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Any comments? This is comment time, Mayor.
How much time?
Comment.
I have none right now.
Oh, that's unusual. Anyway, uh, I guess, uh, that's it. Meeting adjourned.